Welcome to 101. I'm Greg Bassett, your host from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper. It's a big day here at PAC 14 because we're launching our election series interviewing candidates. And this is, we just realized, a historic day in Wycombe County. This is going to be the first interview with someone who is running for the county school board, which is now an elected position. And we're here to welcome David Gosley. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Greg. A pleasure being here.
So you are running in District 3, which is sort of the Powellville-Pittsfield area of the county. Describe where District 3 is for me, so people who are watching know whether they live in District 3 or not.
Basically, at my understanding, there are three overlay maps of the districts. And District 3, pardon me, is part of Fruitland, part of Eden, and the farmland.
Break down Mount Herman Road.
Not entirely, because part of that is in District 4, which is Councilman Joe Holloway's district. And then everything from there south to Worcester County line, Pittsfield, on the south side of 50. 50 is the boundary line. We also have part of Salisbury, which is East Salisbury School.
Right.
Down that area there, which is part of ours.
And the county council member who represents District 3 right now is Larry Dodd.
Larry Dodd, right.
So if Larry Dodd is your county councilman, you live in Mr. Gosley's potential district.
Right.
So why would you run for school board? This is new for you. You've been involved in local politics. School board? Why do this?
Well, we, on the Central Committee, we started this many years ago, the process of getting elected to school board in Wycombe County. We worked with a lot of people, worked across the aisle, in getting this accomplished. And in the presidential election, we had the election for the school board.
As part of a referendum.
And it was in three different phases. And the people in Wycombe County overwhelmingly elected to have a fully elected school board instead of a hybrid type.
Right.
So that's how it all came about, and we were very pleased.
And part of the reason for that is a lot of people felt like the school board wasn't accountable for a lot of the budget decisions. Were you in that group of people who didn't think the school was accountable enough?
Yes, and also, there...people were appointed from Annapolis. They didn't have the touch.
The governor makes the appointment.
Right. They didn't, it was, Annapolis made the appointment through the appointments board up in the governor's office. And even though we interviewed and sent up recommendations, that didn't necessarily mean that they had to follow it.
Right.
Which they didn't in one case.
The local Central Committee would interview candidates, make a recommendation to the governor, the governor would appoint. But people were applying directly to the governor and avoiding the Central Committee.
That's correct. And it just got to the point where we just decided we're going to try to get into it and get an elected school board, because we felt that our school board here should be represented by people of Wycombe County, and the people of Wycombe County should take and decide who would represent them on the school board.
Right.
For their best interest as a children.
How do you think we're doing schools-wise?
Well, I think the graduation rate last year was about 83%, which is not good, but it's not bad. I think it's probably about middle road, just getting into this as an outsider. I think there's a lot more that can be done. I would like to see VOTAC come back in, because there are children out there, you cannot take tests, and, but they're very good with their hands, they know they can do trades and things. If you need a plumber, you need electrician, and they're highly paid skilled jobs.
Right, very much.
And I think we should put more emphasis on that, as well as especially safety. Safety from, because they're responsible from the time they're picked up on the bus until they're dropped off the bus. And that with pre-K going three up, then that provides another problem of the younger, of the younger children, and their safety. And I think we've got a lot of things to look at, especially as the current report goes into effect and the pre-K goes into effect. We've got a lot of challenges.
Do you support this new universal pre-K that we're moving toward?
I do in one sense, and in another sense, as you can see, I've got gray hair, like you do.
Right.
And I came up, and children were allowed to be children to a certain age, then they went to school.
Right.
But the demographics have changed, and everything has changed since then. So...
Do you have children or grandchildren in the system now? Do you get a lot of feedback?
I have great-grandchildren in the system.
Great-grandchildren, okay. What kind of feedback do you hear from them about the quality of the schools?
Different from different ones. Some like it, some don't like it. Some say it's moving at a too faster, faster pace. I had a granddaughter that went to Delmar High, that had college credits before she graduated from high school.
Right.
She was one of the first ones could do that. My grandson had that. But I've also had other grandchildren that just went on through and got a regular education. But I've still come back to VOTAC. We had FFA, Future Farmers of America.
Right.
And we remember all those.
Very, very much.
And I think that we're looking toward edge, the younger children and preparing them for college, and we're kind of forgetting, even though there's a little clause in the current report, for children to take and have VOTAC technical training, but not as much as I feel on that part as it is on the other. I feel that they're kind of, I don't want to try to use the right terminology here, but they need to be taken care of too.
Right, right. In the last budget season with the school board, there was kind of a movement to increase school spending. The county council actually increased the maintenance of effort number for the first time since 2007. And there just seems to be more, more of an advocacy for spending more money on education. Where are you on that?
I think that the spending should be governed by the need. And any business, I'm a businessman too. I've been in business in this county since 64. And if you can't afford something, you don't get it. But if you need it, you see where you can take and get the money for it. And just like the county, I think the school board's gone to the county council on several occasions and asked for special exemption or special funding.
Right.
And they've got it.
Right.
If there's a need for it, get it. But I think that the money should be directly pertaining to the children and the children's educations. I've had teachers tell me that they didn't, they didn't have copy paper, to make test copies.
Right.
With the money that the school board has, the supplies and the needs of the children should be paramount first. Their education, nutrition, and transportation, and safety. And we need qualified teachers, we need to educate, to take care of these things.
When you're elected to the school board, and when you first get in there, what's the first thing you want to do? What's the first sort of change thing you'd like to push through?
I wouldn't call it a change. I'd like to call it a review of the safety procedures and transportation, because I'm involved in transportation industry, in DOT. I do DOT training. And I've been involved in both the driver and also the rules and regulations. And I would like to see, just review that, review the safety practices and that, and see what could be corrected on that, because that is my main area of expertise. And then talk with different people, kind of get my feet wet and see what's going on. I've got the budget for this year, 18 and 19 budget. I'm looking through that now, but there's a lot to digest. And some things we don't have access to yet, because we're not elected.
Right.
So I'm kind of going to reserve that until, if, when I get in there, then take one step at a time, and just try to do the best I can for the people and for the children.
You have a long history of service to the county. You were actually a deputy at one point.
I was deputy sheriff and also Salisbury City Police, then I transferred over to Division of Corrections State of Maryland.
And that was a long time ago, though.
I retired in 97.
That's, that's great. Well, we definitely appreciate your service with that, because it's just so important. And that also adds to the reason, I think, that safety is a big issue with you, with the schools.
I was also in the US Air Force, too, disabled veteran from the Air Force.
Excellent. And you live in Powellville, essentially.
I've been there for 41 years.
Yeah, that's, that's a great community.
Yes, it is.
Dr. Donna Hanlon, our new superintendent, seems to get good grades from the public in terms of her performance. You've met with her recently. What do you think of our superintendent?
Well, I've met her on two or three other occasions, and yesterday I had the opportunity of, I have no conversation with her for a little over an hour in her office. And we established a good rapport, I believe, and I respect her. She's got a lot of good ideas, and her ideas are based on education for the students. And I will support her in that. And pre-K is one of her things that she'd like to see done. And at this point, I see no reason for me not to support her in that. She's a very nice lady, and we got along great yesterday. We exchanged information, exchanged ideas, some of which I could share, some of which I won't share at this time.
Sure.
But mainly, we, we're on the same page.
The last school that was built, well, I guess heavily renovated enough that it seems like a brand-new school, West Salisbury, that's going to be officially dedicated, I think, next week. And the one that's in the pipeline for some controversy for some spending is Beaver Run over on Alderson City Road. Where are you with our facilities? Do you think our facilities are pretty good? Some people like to say that our facilities, we've got gold-plated schools, we've spent too much money on our schools. Where are you on that school construction idea?
Well, on the school construction, I think that schools should be built to be maintained. I think that we should look at the maintenance schedule on these schools. I've heard, I have no basis for this, that the water was bad at Beaver Run for some time.
It is bad. They have to drink bottled water, yes.
And there's no reason for that. That should have been taken care of when it was founded. They should have had a new well out there.
Right.
And taken care of. That is, is maintenance, and that's also a health situation. And we should be able to provide drinking water for the students and for the people working there, and not have them at the expense of bringing water in, then we have to refrigerate it to keep it a certain temperature, whatever the case may be.
Right.
That should be taken care of, as well as if they're on a regular, if they're on a septic system, have that evaluated. That's all in maintenance. And maybe we would need to look at the maintenance department, why these schools are not maintained. They should not be built as throwaway schools.
Right.
And if a broken window is there, it should be fixed. If the grass needs cutting, it should be cut. If a well is needed, if a roof is needed, or an air conditioning unit needs replacing, it should be replaced. There should be enough money in that, in that budget part to take care of those things. And if not, I'm sure if they went to the county council and emergency situation, then I'm sure the county council of Wycombe County has been very good to Board of Education in the past. So I'm sure they would help them all they could.
Right.
If an emergency situation come up.
It seems like the history with the construction of schools is that the school building committees get, you know, they get going, and the capital money gets approved, and then the project gets started, then people seem to become more aware of it, and they, they try to stop it. That happened with Bennett Middle, or they've tried to make a lot of big changes. And I guess that's the fear right now with Beaver Run. There's an aggressive plan for Beaver Run, but there's a fear that it might not be sold right in the end. Any concerns about the whole process and how these schools are built?
Yes, I do have one concern, because with, the one that was built on College Avenue, I liked the report I got on that.
It's the Bennett Senior School.
Right. Where they used thermal heating and air conditioning. I liked that situation. It was good. I saw the figures on that, and if the figures were correct, then it was an advantage, and it will pay for itself in the long run, two times over.
Right.
But the one thing I couldn't understand was dumping all the traffic on only road instead of putting it out on College Avenue, where you had a four-lane highway.
Right.
And then there's still, on South Division Street, there's still not a traffic light situation, which could be an offset traffic light situation, to handle the traffic in peak times. So things, logistic things like that, I'm very familiar with working with and solving the problems on. And it, that's something that's never made sense to me. And you've got the new one, Bennett, built down there in Fruitland. There's a lot of traffic being dumped out on 13.
Right.
Or on the back road there. It seems like that, thankfully, I don't think there's been any accidents as a result of that, but it's still something that should be looked at when you look for the location for our new school, is egress and regress.
Right. So I'm sure people would reach out to you and give you their feedback as the election's going on, as the campaign's going on. How can people get ahold of you?
Well, the best way to get ahold of me is my regular email address, but I do have a Facebook page up, which is David O'Gallagher Sr. for Board of Education. But my email address would be D L G S R D O T at gmail dot com. And I welcome, welcome any comments or any suggestions.
Excellent, thank you.
And they can always reach me by my cell phone, which is 410-430-9645.
He's David Gosley. He's running for school board. This is exciting in District 3 in Wycombe County. First time we've had an elected race in this, and we're just thrilled that you're here today. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Joining me now in the studio is William Turner, the incumbent member of the school board from District 3. Welcome, Bill.
Hi, Greg. How are you?
So you've been on the school board, it'll be up like a, like a year right now you've been on the school board.
Just a year, yeah. I was appointed by the county council last September.
And now that it's a free-for-all, you want to run for the seat?
Yes. Some people say I should have my head examined for running our office, but no, I've learned a lot in the last year, and it's a, it's a really interesting opportunity to give back to the community.
Well, I'd say you've been a Thotha member, and you've helped me certainly as a reporter with a lot of the budget issues that the school board faces. There's kind of a, kind of a movement right now within the school system, not within the system, but outside, that maybe we need to spend some more money or spend money better on education. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that's true. And when I was appointed, I told the county council, who appointed us, that I would not support revenue increases if there weren't, if it wasn't for solutions. And I think our superintendent came forward with some really solid solutions to some of the problems we have in our schools, and I'm more than willing to work to fund those solutions. And I think that's the business community in particular stepped up, and nonprofit community, and I think they really pushed hard, because funding was needed. Our funding is down $10 million from the county compared to what it was 10 years ago, in real dollars, not inflated dollars. And, you know, there's, there's a need to fund certain programs.
That is an amazing thing. When you look at the graphs, like everyone got frozen there for about four years during the recession and coming out of the recession.
Yep.
Other departments were able to recoup some of the losses or continue growing, but the school system stayed pretty flat.
They did. Now, some of that has to do, they, their total revenue wasn't flat, and we did get more money from the state.
Right.
And then from, through grants, and then also from the federal government for various mandates they require us to implement, or, and, and so they provided funding for that. So our total revenue is up, but our share from the county has gone down significantly.
The county's contribution was pretty static.
Yeah. And if, it's ironic that, and I'm not saying anybody doesn't deserve whatever increases they have, but the ones that had the largest increase, increases was the Sheriff's Department, the judicial system.
Right.
The Department of Corrections. I don't know if there's a correlation, but it's just an odd, makes you kind of go, hmm, when you look at that.
Well, there are people that argue that. If you keep our kids educated, they're going to stay out of trouble.
Right. I think that's true.
Yeah. Any big surprises since you joined the board?
I was very pleased with a lot of things that I saw. I think they work very hard at transparency and accountability. I think that's really solid. I think the superintendent has done a good job of establishing a vision that people can support. I think she, right now, probably has the support of the teaching community and, and parents, but we have plenty more to do there.
Big changes that you see in curriculum and things that you would like to do differently? I know the superintendent talks about these different arts schools, disciplines for special stuff. Where are you on some of that?
I'm a big supporter of setting up these mini academies in the various schools, and they don't have to be diploma-type academies. They can be just concentrations for individual students. I think it's a great way to keep our students interested in schools. We do a really good job of getting students ready for college, and we need to work harder at some of the career-ready things when they graduate, mostly because a lot of the retail jobs and food service jobs that students go to aren't available anymore. We need to be focused on, on some of those other academies.
Some of the members of the board were pretty critical of the board before they got there. Now they seem to be part of it, they seem to respect what happens more. Do you, when you get behind the curtain, does it look different than you ever thought?
It, it looks a lot different. And you quickly realize the, where the breadth of your decision-making can be as a board member. You know, it has to be driven by the superintendent and the staff, and we really are basically the board of directors. And so the superintendent brings her vision to us. We can either support it or not support it. We also work on funding issues with her. And I really think that there's so many limitations by state law and federal law these days, that so much is already decided for the board.
Yeah, years ago, people used to complain to me as the editor, there's, you know, too many middle managers, too many assistant superintendents, but that's required by law.
Yeah. And I don't see that much of that. I mean, you talked to some of those individuals who have been on the board recently, and they're big promoters of, of what the school system is doing. They, they know that there isn't the kind of waste that people think there is, and that, we can continue to help show that to the community by being transparent. And when a county council member asks for information, we should be providing it.
The last big fight, I guess, among the schools was about Bennett Middle Construction, a capital issue. Before that, a little bit about James M. Bennett Senior, the high school construction.
Right.
It really divided the county, Bennett Middle. I never understood that, because it seemed obvious to me. Maybe I didn't get it, but when you're out there and you talk to people, what is in their heads about things like this capital spending, where they, where they seem opposed to it?
I think it goes against the, what people, some people think is common sense. It's, it's renovate versus build new, tear down and build new. And, and it's one thing that we spend a lot of time looking at, is what is the cost of renovating a facility that's 50 or 60 years old, as opposed to tearing it down and building new? And really with the, in order to get the state matching dollars, you have to, almost you have to tear down and renovate, so you can have the minimum square footage per student, all the things the state requires, the, the various lead certifications for energy use and that sort of thing. So it's almost, we do look at it, but there's not a lot of decision-making when you look at the facts.
Yep. As we record this, tomorrow morning, they're going to rededicate West Salisbury School.
Yeah.
And that's an example of one. There was a little bit of a fight there. It, it all worked out. But when you go there now, those kids are so proud to be in that school, it's got to do something to the educational experience for everyone, for teachers and kids included, to have a facility like that.
And, and the community, too. That is a really big community school, and the community's going to support that. They have a lot of faith-based supporters for that school, and also other local nonprofits that get into the schools and help and volunteer, and it gets the parents motivated. It really is an amazing facility, and it's half of what the school system wanted. I mean, I wasn't part of that decision, and I understand, it was about the argument of, again, renovating versus rebuilding. And I think we asked for something that was much larger, and the county council finally came down and said, not that big. We're going to build something smaller. I think there's an opportunity maybe to expand it over the years as the need grows, but at some point, it's going to have to, because we're, the population is growing faster than we can have seats in schools right now.
And I keep hearing the next fight's going to be Beaver Run. That's in the pipeline. It desperately needs some help there, that, that facility.
Take a tour of that facility, and you'll walk away and go, wow, it, it's ready. It needs to be completely redone, and...
And they've done a great job keeping it up, getting it back up to where, where it's like usable now.
Right.
Just a few years ago, it was really bad, but they have done some work to it.
You keep, yeah, and you have to pour money in, in for the capital cost to, to do those things, and we've been doing that over the years, the school system has. And it's, it's time to, to make a commitment over there. And I think, I'm not going to speak for the county council, but so far, they've been supportive.
Yeah.
They, they know what the issues are out there, and I hope they continue to support that rebuild.
What is it about being on the school board that you like?
I get to use, well, first of all, I think I can, it makes me feel like I can have a continued impact in improving student success. It's not a big impact, but it is an impact. I think the things, I've been on a number of local nonprofit boards and have been part of decision-making, and when you get involved there, you realize the level of professionalism, the people that come in every day, the teachers, the commitment. It's very exciting, the student members of the school board. I mean, it's everybody's highlight to hear about all the great stuff.
Isn't it great?
It is. There's so much positive going on, and I think the schools, right now, we're doing a better job of sharing that with the community.
The school board meetings are on TV. You can see them, which is great, finally.
Right.
And do you know how to get to that? It's through the website.
Yes, of course.
And you have a new website?
Yep. And I haven't missed a meeting yet, but I did, before I went on the board, I went back and looked at some of the board meetings to make sure I was kind of up to speed on some of the discussions that were going on. So, yeah, it's very available. I still feel like I can have a continued impact on student success in the school system. It's a small impact, but it's certainly something that I believe in. I think public education is vital to our community.
When I do the Today in History column, so I'm delving back into the logs every week, I go back and I look at the superintendents. It's been a superintendent-driven system for a long time, going back to Royd Mahaffey. And I think sometimes the boards will rely too much on the superintendent's vision, but every now and then you get a board member that has a lot of vision. And I would, I would argue that Mr. Fitzgerald, Don Fitzgerald, and your board has some great vision. Do you have some vision for what the school system should be?
There are a number of things I'd like to see us continue to do. One is, is continued on the, with transparency and accountability. Two, and you're going to hear everybody talk about safe schools. Safe schools isn't just hardening entrances and putting resource officers into schools. It really is about identifying students who have difficulty dealing with the social aspects of schools early on, and helping them do a better job of their day, spending their day in schools, and also those families. And in addition to that, and sometimes that takes help from social workers, and, and also keeping students interested in what's going on in the schools, having opportunities for them to do things, even though they're not going to go on to college. Maybe they have an expertise in either agriculture, or farming, small farms, growing vegetables, or you can do STEM things now without going on to college, and drone research, or learning how to do GPS. There's a lot of those things I think the schools could get involved in, that would keep kids interested in staying in school until they graduate.
Yeah, because essentially, with the really smart kids, have scholarship opportunities, don't have to be part of the public school system. They can go, maybe cut their own curriculum somewhere else if they want. So a public school system is sort of obligated now to find the right elements for these super-smart kids who need to stay in the system.
That's right. And just this past year, I think this fall, we're opening up a digital media as part of the VOTAC Center, and that's going to be at Y High. And really, it's, it's a combination of gaming and other things, activities that students can learn. And they'll, they'll get a certificate showing that they have some level of competency in that when they graduate. I think it's, the students are really excited about it.
Right.
I think that's the kind of thing we ought to be looking at. Maybe other things in the healthcare field. STEM, of course, is really big right now and continue, but I think you have to be really selective with that. Have generalized STEM programs, but also maybe more specifics, dealing with, you know, networking. We have the, I think, the largest or second-largest holder culture system program in the state.
Right. Right there at Parkside, yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot more we could do with that. And kids seem to be really excited about getting involved in that program. You know, it used to be more maybe the sons and daughters of farmers in our community. You know, now they're students who have never been on a farm before, they're interested in that, maybe doing, you know, small farm, or vegetable growing, or organic farming, You know, now they're students who have never been on a farm before, they're interested in that, maybe doing, you know, small farm, or vegetable growing, or organic farming, and, you know, apiary, making honey and working with bees. And, and so, there's a lot going on there, and I, I think we need to continue doing that.
It was quite the exercise in terms of safety last spring. Something happened on the east side with one of the schools there, a kid had a problem. Because of social media, it turned into something else in people's minds. Superintendent had a 48-hour window there where she was able to kind of tamp it down, and explain what happened without violating the privacy of the student. But that's social media stuff, if that doesn't get addressed in a way really fast, it can be really damaging.
Probably one of the most important skills a superintendent has to have today is dealing, being able to deal with that, knowing what you can say, what you can't say, dealing with it immediately, working, having a great relationship with the local law enforcement officials, which I think we really do have, you know, working with the SROs in the schools. It really is a, a big help, and I think our current superintendent is right on top of that. I think she has really good communication skills. And that's a challenge, because parents, you know, there was a, a parent meeting about bullying, and it's, it, in another middle school. And it, things started getting out of hand, and so, the school system got involved, the, some of the assistant superintendents went to that meeting, they explained what the opportunity, the principal was there. You know, a lot of it's just communication skills with parents and students. And I think we're doing a better and better job of that, and I'm, I think our superintendent has a fine job of it.
As you're running here the last couple of weeks, how can people get ahold of you, to, to ask you questions and tell you what they're thinking?
Well, sure, they can call me on my cellphone, I don't mind that at all, and I guess I can give you my number.
Sure.
It's 410-726-3897. I have had a few phone calls, I do get occasional email, I think you can look that up on the Board of Elections website.
Yes.
At email any questions, and, and also, there'd be something, there's always something in the media about, you know, how to get in touch with us, so, happy to do that.
He's school board member William Turner, running for election, a historic situation here in the county. The first elected, popularly elected school board, and we're just thrilled that you're here today, thanks.
Thanks Greg.
I'm Greg Bassett from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper, another edition of 101, special election edition, here on PAC 14. First Shore Federal was proud to support PAC 14 and 1-on-1. We'd encourage every business to support PAC 14, and, and pick a program and support it, and let's make a difference.